Hey, where did you find it when you thought I took your?
Part of like...
Where'd you find it?
Vergano?
Here.
Malone?
Here.
Patrani? Anderson?
Yes.
Stupi?
Here.
Yeah, for some reason I'm extra loud.
I'll lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm not liking this sound, but I can hear it. Item 1.22, adoption of the agenda, is there a motion?
Send move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Question, roll call?
Vergano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stupi?
Yes.
Motion passes, item 1.3, approval of the April 14 meeting minutes, is there a motion?
Send move.
Second?
Second.
Vergano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stupi?
Yes.
Motion passes, item 2.1, Springboro Education Association reports, probably not seen by any report. Move on to item 2.2, Springboro classified employees' report. And item 2.3, public participation prearranged. I don't think anyone has requested to speak. So item 3.1, move on to the treasury report.
And these will be for the March 2015 financials. I'll answer any questions that you have, but can briefly just kind of run through where we're at. At March end, we had spent 3.6 million in expenditures, which is very much in line at where we were last year at this time. It is April 30th, and I did check before we came here to see how we were doing this month. And I have proposed at 3.65 million for the end of April, and we're at 3.6 right now. So we are slightly under what we had anticipated for April. So we're running very close to what is expected now for the rest of the year. So hopefully we'll be coming in pretty close to what projections were. There might be a few changes in the May forecast for some of the overages we had been talking about in purchase service and things from some of our contracts that we've gotten in through some new special ed kids. But other than that, we're pretty close on that. If you look at revenues, our revenues came in at 6.771 for the month of March. So if we look at where we were last year versus this year at this time, we're actually about a half a million dollars ahead on revenue than where we were last year at this time, so that's great. I do anticipate that we're going to come in rate as planned within, I'm hoping, within 20,000 of what I anticipated for revenue. So we're doing really well. We have seen a slight increase in the new construction growth, even more so than the growth we had already projected. So there might be a little bit of change in that, but it's going to be for the better, so it's really good. And then for our cash flows, I mean, our cash flows are obviously lower than they were this time last year because of all of the things that we've done this year as far as our textbook adoptions and all of the investments in technology and things that we've been doing. So expect our cash flows to be lower, but we're still at 9.395 million. So we're pretty on schedule of what we anticipated to be made around now anyway. So things are looking pretty good.
Is there a motion to approve the report?
Send move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a question.
Sure.
I was looking at my favor report, the budget to... Let me look at what you called it. The budget to actual. And you're showing a, at this point in time, an actual minus 2.65 for the difference between expenses and revenue. In other words, expenses are more, 2.6 million more? But when I look at the total revenues of 35.3 million and the expenses of 36.3, it looks like...
Well...
If I did the math right, then...
Well, yeah. So that, I didn't talk about that. I was talking about expenses this month versus this month last year, and then revenues this month versus revenues this month last year. And the cash flows is where you can kind of tell what you're talking about. Because of all of these things that we've approved with the textbook adoptions and things, yes, we are deficit spending. We, that's what that shows you, that we are deficit spending. And we have been actually in this district for the past several years. It's just not been really, you know, highlighted, but it has been.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we actually, yeah, we have been.
Dr. Tobe brought it up.
But that's what, that's what that'll show you. Our revenues, even though our revenues are up versus this time last year, we still are spending more than we're bringing in.
You're answering a different question than I'm asking. I'm just looking at the two numbers, the total revenues and the total expenses. I'm subtracting them.
Right.
And I'm coming up with just round numbers in my head, a million dollars, but you have 2.6 on the report. And so I'm questioning, is that 2.6 number...
It's the revenue that is over or under expenditures. We are actually spending, we've spent 2.6 million more, is that what you're talking about?
No, in the column titled Actual.
Mm-hmm.
Second from the right.
Thought, yes.
Total revenues, 35.3 million dollars.
35.326, mm-hmm.
Total expenses, 36.336.
Mm-hmm, 36.713.
Subtract those. About a million bucks.
Yeah, this, I think it's talking about revenue over/under. I'd have to go back and look at that actual document to see how it tally, because it's like all of a formulated spreadsheet. So maybe something is tallied, I'm not sure. I just...
So that line is titled...
I feed the numbers in, so I...
That's line that's titled revenues over/under expenditures.
Under expenditures.
Will you double check that?
Yeah, absolutely, I will, absolutely. Because these reports right here are the same kind of as this one. I set it up, and this pulls out of a separate report that I load in from our five-year. So it's all calculated out. So if something gets intertwined, it could throw it off, but I'll definitely look at it. But it is our, I mean, I'm not sure why it's, I'd have to look at that. I mean, I can send you an email and respond to it. This is an extra report that I kind of started to use, and I also loaded another one on here too. This, this one, that's the monthly estimates report. It's a new one that I kind of did based off of what David had asked for. So that's also out there too, and I'll double check both of those, because those are two extra reports. Did we get that? Yeah. Okay, so Vergano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stupi?
Yes.
Then we'll move on to item 3.1, approval of the resolution to exempt the non-employment rate as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying that. Is there a motion?
Send move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Vergano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stupi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Move on to item 4.1,人力资源 resources. Director of human resources.
4.1 is approval of a continuing contract for Sarah Bershner. She is an intervention specialist at Bydett Elementary.
Do we want to take them, these individually, or...
We can do them all at once if you'd like.
I didn't know if anybody wanted to be one of the group of people.
4.1 through 4.8, I'm finding a group of all of us.
4.1 through 4.8. So we are looking for approval for continuing contracts for Sarah Bershner, Nick Palmer, Lindsay Meek, Sarah Fox, Jody Clark, Becky Flutie, Ms. Swanson, I'm sure, oh, Jeremy, that's Mr. Swanson, and...
Kevin Goodikins.
Kevin Goodikins at the high school.
And so the 4.1 through 4.8, there is a motion, is there a second?
Send move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
If I may make a comment first. Well, not, not a question, I guess, just a comment. You know, for the preceding three years, I've not voted for any of the continued contracts that have come before us. In fact, I think the first two years, we just didn't have any come. But, and it's a philosophical thing, I don't have anything against any of these particular folks one way or another. It's just that I think that these offer permanent job security for these folks unless they screw up in a major behavioral way. And I just think that, you know, I just have a problem with giving somebody a job for life, and, which is pretty much what it is. It makes it, I guess, it's an insurance policy that's not necessary. There's all kinds of employment laws out there now to protect every worker against discrimination and all the other fronts that perhaps one day a continuing contract served a purpose for. Those aren't needed anymore, so I'll be voting against all of those contracts.
Okay. Roll call?
Vergano?
No.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stupi?
Yes.
Move on to item 4.9.
4.9 is, we are requesting for the superintendent's plan for Clear Creek to become the learning center. There is a need for a part-time intervention specialist position in order to fulfill the roles needed in the pre-K through first grade.
Yeah, this would be preschool right here. This is the preschool position.
And is there a motion?
Send move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Vergano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stupi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
4.10 is, we are asking for the superintendent an approval of an additional classified staff position. This will be for a building secretary, and this will be for the new Clear Creek Learning Center.
If I could, it's actually for the Clear Creek Learning Center in Springboro Intermediate. All your, what you voted for tonight, we are reducing in force, actually, Mr. Pennell's administrative assistant from central office, which then will allow us to pay for the secretary that'll go between Clear Creek and Springboro Intermediate, doing some special ed work to hopefully save us money on the amount of money we're spending on meetings and subcalls and things of that nature. So that'd be one of the major duties, and that will be a full-time administrative position.
Full-time administrative assistant?
Administrative assistant of the secretary.
Okay, okay.
They're deemed now as administrative assistants.
Is there a motion?
Send move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Vergano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stupi?
Next, for the superintendent, we ask for the report for human resources for items 1 through 143. We have many tonight, gentlemen, that out, that we are asking for teachers who are a one- or two-year contract. It is the time of year where we renew or give them a new contract, and so you have many for awarding one- and two-year certified contracts for next year. We also are very proud to announce that we have gotten two school psychologists who are interns, who are brand-new, coming to the district for their first job. And we also would like to identify that Roena Latimore, who is one of our school psychologists, she will be leaving. And finally, at the last 132 through 143, those are all classified substitutes, that we are looking for various positions for next school year. So we are looking for approval for items 1 to through 43 this evening.
Is there a motion?
Send move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question. The psychologists, are they classified, certified, or...
They are certified, they are under the teacher's contract.
Thank you.
Roll call?
Vergano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stupi?
Item 412, for the superintendent, we are asking for approval of some classified personnel training days. That will be, as you just approved for Chelsea Frye, she's going to be our new clinic nurse at Dennis Elementary. And we are looking, because we are able to, been notified of the resignation of the former nurse, we would like her to train the incoming nurse, who is going to be Chelsea. And we are looking for training days not to exceed 10 days at Dennis Elementary, starting May 18th through the end of the year. So when we start in the fall, for those thousand students that go to Dennis Elementary, we will have a highly qualified and trained clinic nurse to begin the school year.
Eight hundred next year?
No, 1,200 to 984.
Oh, my goodness, I'm reading the numbers. Is there a motion?
Send move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call?
Vergano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stupi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to four hundred, reports, comments, or questions, or...
Okay. The other thing I have is that I'd like to congratulate everyone who was involved in the Spring musical, Shrek, with kids and the teachers, everyone involved did a wonderful job, and it was just certainly one of the highlights of the year.
Nothing this evening? Nothing this evening.
Yeah, you've been missing. I'll work on something for the next evening.
Anything, Dave?
Just echoing what Dr. Malone said.
I wish I could have been there and run it down this time, I knew it was a great weekend. Public announcements, please. Future considerations?
I do have one I'd like to talk about tonight. Mr. Pennell and I have been working with the high school principal and our secondary specialist on school fees. And one of the things, pardon my sniffling, it's kind of a cold, but we're looking at the parking pass fee, and we're thinking of right now moving it from $15 to $50. I realize that's a dramatic increase, but when we really take into consideration, right now we're out of parking spots, and the parking lots that we have need some serious attention, but we may need to look at additional parking area. Some people would say, well, just don't let the sophomores drive. Well, keep in mind, we're maxed on our buses. I mean, our buses are as lean as you can get, so if we push the sophomores to ride the bus, then we need to hire another driver and buy a bus. So we're really caught in a difficult situation here. So what we're doing is looking at the cost of parking lots, restriping, the surveillance it takes. Officer Wilson is there, which is overtime each time that he is there to help parking get in and out. Plus, we're going to see over the next three years, possibly 400 more students at the high school. So we're really trying to estimate. And right now, it's looking like it's going to be about $50 instead of $15, which would be a dramatic increase for that one particular fee. So I just wanted to bounce that off of you tonight and see if you have any quick thoughts on that. Carpool, yeah, exactly.
That, that money would be used to help prove the...
Correct, it's going to go right back into the parking lot situation, that's what it would go back into.
Don't they, don't those parking pass fees right now go into the high school principal fund?
No, actually, it goes in to pay for the reception. My first year here, which was Dr. Malone's last year, we changed it then, because there needed to be a receptionist, and he said, well, just take the parking fee money to pay for the receptionist, because they were hitting 1,700, 1,800 kids. So right now, it goes to pay that salary, but we need, it doesn't even cover that. Let me give you an example. We're, we're $15, Carlisle's $20, Lebman's $50, everyone else is above that. So we're very low in that particular area, and that's one of those things, it's not sustaining itself at all. Now, I think our high school does some different things, if they're on honor roll or pass the OGT, there's some different rewards they can get for their performance that might decrease that price, or perhaps, you know, some different things like that. They're going to continue to look at those things. But right now, that's what we're looking at, for $15, $50 for the parking pass.
But, well, in the past, then, that money was in the principal fund. I mean, maybe recently, since you've been here, it was. You know, like, I guess one of the things I've heard complaints from parents is that, you know, I don't mind paying the parking, but I wish it went to improve the parking lot. So I guess I hear you on the right track, but at the same time, I think that because that, those monies have not been put towards parking or paving in the parking lot, it seems like we're planning a huge amount of catch-up by trying this to...
I can answer that, because Dr. Malone should have to defend from when, his last position that he's retired from. That high school account was basically a rotary fund. When I took over the job, Dr. Malone mentioned, he said, it's, you can never pinpoint how much money you had in there. So Tracy Jarvis sat down with me and went through it, and even till last year, Tara was continuing to fix it, because unlike all of our other buildings, they were taking, money was flowing through there based on how the treasurer liked to pay for AP exams, yearbooks, all kinds of things that were paid out.
Yeah, but you misunderstand my point. It's not to throw a barb at my colleague here. If that money had been going towards parking, and I'm not, you know, whatever it went for, it went for, okay? But if it had, we would be able probably to deal with paving and striping and that stuff. But we didn't, we, we spent, we, we spent money that probably should have been general fund money. We, we used the principal fund to support that, okay? So why shouldn't the general fund money now support some of this?
Boy, still, we, it will still be supporting part of it. A parking lot at the high school is about a quarter of a million dollars. If we resurfaced all those, it'd be about a half a million. So $50, we're certainly not going to pay to redo these parking lots, when we have 400 more kids in the building, and it'll sustain that way for five years. So, yeah, there's definitely going to have to be general fund money out of it. This will just hopefully get us up to speed more. We would have to increase that parking pass price hundreds of dollars to get to where we need to be. So, and that's one example, I mean, there's lots of examples. Why wasn't money kept in for the turf? That's an unmet need that we have.
You know, I think that, I think that decisions have been made over the years reflecting the current philosophy of the district and the Board of Education, and to some degree, the needs. You're right, for several years, the parking passes were about $15 apiece, and they were put in the, in the principal's fund to be used for general student activities. There was also a period of time where the Board of Education, across the board, reduced fees, and the parking fee was one of them. And for a few years, the parking fee went down because, to $11.25, because the philosophy at that time was that we don't want to charge the students, the parents, any more than we have to. And so now, the philosophy's changed again, and there's nothing wrong with that. And, and so, the, you know, I, I guess what I'm saying is that we can look back and say the parking fee all at times should have been used to pay the parking lot, but, but realistically, that was not the philosophy at that point in time.
Well, and I'd like to share with the board my philosophy, Mr. Anderson, we probably never even had the discussion, but it's my belief that parents who have kids in school should pay a little more, because when we're reducing fees or we're giving back money, it ultimately makes us come back to the taxpayer faster. And there's a lot of retired people in Springboro that are on fixed incomes. So when we're reducing things, in essence, we're just moving it back faster. And now, when there's additional money needed, that's where, that's, I just don't feel that, I believe in, I'm a parent, that I should pay more while my son's in school than someone who's retired that already put their kids through school. That's why I believe we need to have fees.
So, so isn't parking just a, I'm sorry, you guys, since I just showed up, since I thought I'd step into the conversation? No, not really, but I actually had a conversation about this two years ago, about raising it because of the supply and demand issues that were there, because it's more of an amenity, it's more of a privilege, it's more of a, and also, we had a parking problem that's coming up. So, you know, $100 parking pass for the privilege of parking on campus, as much as I'm not saying do it at $100, but instead of building a parking lot, let's create supply and demand flows that have different ebbs and flows versus spending $250,000 to have a rastrow.
And we just talked about that beforehand. If we don't have additional parking, and we just let juniors and seniors park, then we have to add a bus route, because we have to put all the buses, the kids that need to have a bus. We will have to buy a bus and hire a driver, because we do not have any extra.
But you're assuming that the same number of kids are going to drive. If you raise the price of that past $50, you're not going to have as many kids drive.
But if they don't drive, they're going to ride a bus.
Right, true.
That's what I'm saying.
You're not going to, you're not going to need the money to, well, you probably need to do some repairs, but, but you're not going to need to do any parking.
I can't imagine people not paying.
How much was it, I know we approved there...
Over $500,000 last year for what we did last year.
Just a drop in the box.
Correct, exactly.
Just a drop in the box.
I think it's fair, I think it's a fair trade-off, or if you're going to use a parking lot, you should. Then it comes down to about $5 a month. So for $1 a month, I'd pay that to, to come and park.
Good way to look at it, I'd look at it.
One more point is that the demand right now far exceeds the number of spaces that we have. I certainly haven't kept up with this, but I know the high school lot probably handles the neighborhood of 500 to 600 spots.
550.
And we'd probably sell another 150, 200 spots at the junior high.
250.
Okay, so the point is that the demand far exceeds the, the supply. So if we lost some because of high fees, which I'm not sure we would, we're still going to more than fill up the high school parking lot.
All right, we're going to continue the discussion.
I think that, I have a final comment, and this, I think the $50 fee is very, is certainly a lot more palatable if the parents clearly know the money is going to the upkeep and your security of the cars and parking.
And we do have new cameras in that area, which was something we purchased with Mr. Vergano worked on safety plan. That was one of the things there, so we do have new cameras in that parking lot, which we've used a couple of times, and they are unbelievable how clear they are, I'll tell you. They are something to see. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll bring all the school fees sometime in May for vote, but we're going through all of them right now.
Okay. And a motion to move into executive session to consider the appointment, appointment dismissal, discipline, promotion, and motion. What do we do?
We didn't have any work session items, so there's not...
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
About the school fees in the parking lot. How do the high school fees compare to other districts when you're comparing their parking fees to our parking fees?
Well, right now, we know Carlisle's at $20, we're 15, Franklin's at 5.
Right, but you said Lebanon's...
Lebanon's at 50.
And how are their school fees compared, is it comparable?
Actually, our elementary school fees, I looked at what Lebanon, if we're comparable to them...
But I mean high school.
High school, it's all over the place. When you look at high schools that offer what we do, we're low in comparison to a lot of other districts. There's a lot of other districts that pass on much more of the cost. So that's, it's, it's very, very...
I'd like to communicate, because like, as a parent of two high schools next year, and we do carpool, we have, like, my sophomore carpools, there's four in the car, and they were going to carpool next year, but they've got two high school fees along with a $50. If we're going to do this, it needs to be communicated out, something about, you know, comparing that our school fees, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know, something that this is low compared to what other communities are, or something, so people are seeing that this is not this. Because first, when you think 15 to 50, it seems very large, and if people just see the size of our high school, I mean, we, you have four kids like we do, and you just see the chunk, especially if two of them are in high school, it's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of dollars, so if you see an additional, and, you know, you think 15 to 50, it doesn't seem big, but when you're seeing hundreds of dollars, especially if there is other things in the future that you're looking... I'm going to stop right there.
I get what you're saying, it's a good idea.
We've got to work on communication, and it just seems like a lot of little things that keep coming. And I know it seems little, but everyone's saying, yeah, we definitely need to do it. But as a parent that's looking at this... but as a parent that's looking at this, just one more thing is being dumped on us because it's a privilege to drive, a little bit hard to stomach. That's it.
Yep.
We're paying a lot in fees right now, that for pre-education. Thank you.
So that will move into executive, a motion to executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation by a public employee or official, preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions upon their appointment, matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulation or state statute.
So moved.
Second?
Second.